Twenty twenty six hall conflicts call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Adam Corrigan, will you please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with which we shall govern.
Thank you very much. Number three, executive session. Do you have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved. Second.
Second. Okay, you do have a motion?
Yes, and Mayor, the members who should be present at the executive session, not only obviously the members of the city council, but the city manager and city attorney.
Okay, perfect. We're gonna turn them off now.
Discussion?
Discussion. We'll just turn them off.
I just want the public to know, the council, that I was asked by a member of the Dallas Fire Department to sit in on investigation there. So I want that known publicly, that I did sit in on that investigation for that individual.
Right, and then pursuant to the policies that are private. And so any facts and circumstances that you may have learned as part of your role should also obviously remain private.
Well, what I'm asking for is not that.
Oh.
I'm asking for, uh, to make sure that I don't have a conflict of interest.
Oh, no, that's not true. Oh, okay.
That's on the rest of the matter.
Okay. No, thank you.
That's why I wanted to clarify.
All right, let's go ahead and turn them off.
Can I do both at the same time? Because I want to table.
Yes, Mayor.
All right, item number four and number five?
One, right? Five, one.
Presentation, yeah. One and one. For each one. I move to table.
Second.
Discussion. Do you have any discussion on that?
No.
Hearing that, all in favor, say the five. They say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Which, which, what table do you want?
Table means the presentation, the discussion item. One. Discussion item number one. Both have to do with the fire department.
Under four, right?
Four, one.
Four and five, one.
Okay, all right.
Okay, number two, a discussion item. Discussion and possible election on con- It's supposed to be on contacting, yeah. Contacting IPM for possible interview of city manager candidates. Mr. Kissinger?
This is Sir Mr. Ray, item that you proposed to put up the agenda.
Yes.
Mr. Tim Pickering is available. You can call if you wish. I got his phone number. If you want to get him on the line, you can definitely give him a call. And we can discuss your option with partnering with IPM for your city manager. There was a specific question asked me specifically to answer there with me.
Mm-hmm.
But I believe Mr. Pickering is probably able to answer, and he might be a better to answer.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
So if let me, if you don't mind giving him a call, if that's what the mayor would like.
Yes, yes, go ahead. Let's get him on the line.
I'm sorry, is that less for these?
0949.
Did you tell him we'd be this late, John?
I told you we'd be after three. Pickering? Pickering, Mr. Tim Pickering.
Tim Pickering.
Hello, this is Tim Pickering.
Yes, this is Lady Sir Waddens from the City of Nogales. We're currently in a council meeting, and I understand from Mr. Kissinger that you're ready to join us in the meeting.
If you could hold on one second, I'll be right with you.
Thank you, sir. I will.
All right, thank you. Hello, Janet. Tim Pickering.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear pretty good. How about me? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, perfect.
That's the mayor, Mr. Garino.
This is Mayor Garino. How are you doing?
Oh, I'm doing pretty good. How's your e-session going?
It's going, going well.
Oh, great.
Better than what I expected.
Know what I can do for you?
Yes. Mr. Kissinger's going over. Go ahead, Mr. Kissinger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Mr. Pickering is with IPM, and you had some questions last meeting about the potential engaging Mr. Pickering for the services of a search for a city manager. I believe Councilman Van Esian reached out to him. He sent over a letter of engagement. I believe all of you have that copy of that letter of engagement that I supplied you. You asked me to reach out to him and ask him a specific question about being able to have an independent candidate plus the candidates that Mr. Pickering could send you for consideration. I did ask him that question, but more importantly, I have him on the phone, and I think maybe it's a better question that the council can talk to Mr. Pickering, and Mr. Pickering can tell you a little bit and educate you all about his program and what services he can offer. And having that said, Mr. Pickering, I'll go ahead and just turn the meeting over to you, and you can, you can talk to my council about the services that you can offer them, so.
Well, thanks very much, John. I appreciate that. Good afternoon, council. It's an honor to be talking with you today. Basically, what we've done for the last ten years is provide interim department directors, interim city managers to all the cities and counties in Arizona. We feel very adept at that and appreciate you considering our service. What we provide is security of time. We turn around our, our candidates, probably within a week or two, they're going to be, and be able to be in front of you and be interviewing. And I have a group of associates that have signed, you know, contracts with us, and I would say I probably have a couple dozen city managers, specifically that have managed previous communities, and almost all of them are in Arizona. That's what we specialize in. That's where we're based. And so I feel very confident that we can provide a professional, well-educated, experienced city manager for your, during the interim time. How this works is once I receive the retainer letter, I'll go through those resumes that I have, and I'll reach out to the ones that I think are, you know, most matched with your situation. And I got a good feeling for what that was when I talked to the council member about what it was you were looking for. But af-, you know, after I'm done, if you have any comments of specifics that you're looking for in an interim city manager, I'm happy, happy to listen to those. But once I go through that list of associates, I narrow it down to typically two or three, and then because I really feel that that's my responsibility is to, you know, kind of cull that list so that you're not going through, you know, 25 resumes where people may or may not be available to service as an interim. And the good thing that, that that provides is when I give you the resumes for interim city manager, you, you are guaranteed that they're able to do the job. It's not like you're interviewing and then, oh, can they do the job? Maybe they can't. No, I get that worked out ahead of time that, hey, this is the schedule. It's full-time. You know, it's on-site, or maybe, you know, some of it's off-site, however it is that it works out. But you're guaranteed that, that person that's in front of you, that resume that's in front of you, is able to do the job and willing to do the job. All this takes place, as I said, very quickly because we've already vetted and searched out and researched each individual associate of ours, and so we can turn it around very quickly. You'll, they'll already have background checks done. They've, they, also, the, the other thing that I would say about our process that has worked out well is, you know, we provide all the insurance that, you know, cities require. There's normally indemnification and things like that, and we have all those insurances. We also, we are the employer of the interim city managers. You would do a contract with us. We employ them, and we, you know, provide them with all the things that are required to provide an employee, you know, workers' comp and all that sort of stuff. So you don't have to worry about later, you know, oh, well, hey, I, I'd like to, you know, get credit for my service here or something like that, or they don't want to leave. All it is is a phone call to me that says, hey, that, this engagement, you know, we've, we've completed it and we're ready to move on, and that's all it takes versus somebody that gets in the position and, you know, kind of wants to hang on to it. That's just, that's just not how we operate. John, is that a pretty good overview of where we stand, or were there other questions?
Mr. Mayor? Yes, go ahead.
Tim, I think that's, that's a great overview of the services you pride, provide, and I'm not sure if council has any questions for you. I'll turn it over to the mayor to curious council to see if they have any additional questions for you.
Yes, Tim, if, if there's somebody local that, some council and, you know, he's been city county manager in the past, if, if he, if he were to be in the same application process for us to interview, could you explain to me how you proceed with that? If he, if, that's if he wanted, if he would want to be part of it.
Yeah, and we've, we've handled this situation before, and what I typically tell councils is, hey, if you have somebody local that you think could do the job, just point me in their direction and I'll reach out to them, and, you know, we can sign them up through IPM and, and get that covered. Because you want to be covered not only with the insurances, but the thing that you have to watch out for is you select someone, you haven't done all the background check, and it ends up with egg on your face. And, and the reason I say that is that actually happened in Wickenburg, Arizona. This exact same scenario. They had brought me in, but they said, hey, we want a local person. And it was early when I started my business. I said, okay, you know, we'll go down that route. And we did, and they ended up choosing the, a local person to be the interim. The problem was, a week later, the headline in the newspaper is, interim city manager has a sexual harassment case in process against him. And so I don't want that to, to happen to my clients, and so that's why I have that exclusivity where, no, it's just, you know, if, if you want me to do it, I'm happy to do it. If, if not, that's okay too. But we don't, we don't give up that exclusivity because of that exact issue because then IPM's name could be, you know, brought up through that, and people think, oh, you provided that person, and, and I, I don't want to get into that. So, but I'm happy, as I said, if you have candidates that you want me to vet and sign up and review to see if they should be in, you know, in that process. I'm, I'm happy to do it, and, and that's part of our service.
Yeah, that, that was the concern, that how would you go about that? But then again, we have to find out if, if once you, you're given the name, if the person wants to go through that process. And, and it, it's a good idea of, you know, what you say about you vetting the person and you being responsible for, for that person, the employment itself. Another question. If, if, if the interim that's selected through your business, if we decide to, and that person also decides to be, to get a contract for a year or two, how, how would you go about that?
Well, it's very easy. You work out all the details with them. There is an engagement fee that's, that's charged when that occurs because it's, it's really, and it's very standard in my type of industry because basically you're, you would be taking away an asset of my company's. And so that's why you have that, and it's really meant kind of almost as a penalty to, to persuade people not to do that. But I'll tell you, it does happen. And, and in my opinion, it, it's the best way to hire someone because you get to kick the tires. You get to try them out, and they get to do the same thing, you know? And, you know, sometimes, and I, I was the city manager for four different cities and for about 20 years or so. And sometimes, you know, after, you know, a month or so, you're like, oh, no. How did I hire this person? They really don't fit into our culture and aren't, aren't really a fit for our organization. And so by doing it this way, you can eliminate that guesswork and get that, you know, out, out of the way. But there's nothing to stop you to, you know, bringing them on and hiring them directly after that.
Well, that's good to hear. Is there anybody else having to say? Yes, go ahead. Right, Mayor.
Mr. Pickering, this is Vice Mayor Bulorkis. Have a question to, if we do go with your company, would you be the one negotiating the salary for this individual?
I'm sorry, I missed that one?
Would you, would you negotiate the salary for the individual that's selected?
Yes. For, for the interim, yes. You don't have to worry about any of that. We actually have a cooperative agreement through the city of Maricopa, and we typically, a lot of cities will write off of that. And I, I always handle those things upfront because if, if somebody isn't willing to do the job for, you know, the amount that, you know, we can work out, then I don't want them sitting in front of you. That's just going to be a big waste of time for you. And, you know, time is of the essence in most of these types of searches because they need somebody. They need them quick. And I guess I would, I would ask, what is the timing on this? How quickly do you want this turned around where you're interviewing, you know, like I said, typically the two to three associates that, that I can provide for you? How quickly do you want to do that?
And, and we do have a, you know, a certain range here, a salary range in the city. Would you, would you talk to the deputy city manager about that? So you would kind of be in the, the idea where we're, where we're at before you even discuss salary with?
Yeah, I, I, I already know that. He already told me that when I previously spoke. And it's a fine salary for, you know, you know, a city manager, and you should be able to track somebody, you know, permanently for that position. The nice thing with our contract is everything's included. You don't have to pay any taxes. You don't have to pay any benefits. It's just one number. And, and we can either just reimburse for like lodging and mileage, or we could do a stipend when they're there, however it is that we want to handle it. But I'm, I'm confident, and I've known John for a long time now, I'm confident we could, we could work all that out.
And you do know that city manager that's hired by, by Nogales has to live in Nogales?
Mm-hmm.
You do know that?
Yeah, that, and that would be, that would be a question that you would want to ask the permanent manager.
Okay.
That they, you know, are they willing to do that? I, I want to be real clear too, that we do not provide the headhunting service. We do not like go out and recruit and trying to find you a permanent city manager. That, that is not what we do. There's lots of really good consultants that, you know, HR firms that can do that for the city, but that's not what our niche is. the city, but that's not what our niche is. Our niche is providing, you know, the interim. And the, the other thing I'd tell you about having a good, well-known, experienced interim city manager, is city management is a very small world, and if you get someone that is well-known in the profession, you know, other city managers that may, might not consider taking the job, they'll call that person, and they'll say, hey, tell me what it's like. Tell me what the, the community's like, and the council, and the staff, and that kind of stuff. And it, it really can change the reputation of the position in the profession, because that person is well-respected, the one that we provide, and, you know, people in the profession are going to listen to them.
That's good. Anybody have a question? Go ahead, councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. Tim, this is Councilman Joe Diaz. I've met you before through Mr. Shane Daly.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, I remember you played, you played the drums, right, in the band?
No, harmonica.
Harmonica, okay, all right.
That was close.
At least I got the bad part right. So, but anyways, is there a minimum or a maximum amount of time this contract would be valid for, like, three months, six months, a year, for an interim city manager? Are they, are there kind constraints?
Well, what we typically do is you tell me how long you want this there. You know, if it's six months, we say, okay, we'll do a six-month contract, or minimum is three months that we do, because we know that, hey, it's just going to last that long. But it's, it's really up to you, because, but that's an important factor, because when I'm talking to my individual associates, they'll say, well, how long do you think this is going to be? And I tell them, you know, it might be six months, it might be three months, it might be a year, and they, and they're committing to that. You know, so it's, it's important that if you think the process is going to last, you know, on average, these are, well, with city management, they're longer, on average, it's about five months for a department director, but with, with city manager, it might be a little bit longer than that. But regardless, it, it's your choice how long you want to do it for, and then what we do is just go month to month. So what I'm saying is, I'm, I can't guarantee that they'll continue on after that, you know, initial stage, whatever that is, you know, three or six months, but we just continue on month to month after that.
Thank you, Tim, thank you, that's happening to you.
Go ahead, councilman.
Tim, Councilman Maldonado, if, if, once you go into a month to month, is, is that prorated on, on the charge, or is it continuing the same, same rate as, let's say, the six-month charge?
Yeah, good, good question, real good question. Typically, after the first of the year, we have a slight increase, because our costs go up each year, you know, with, you know, legal costs, and workers' comp, and all the stuff that I have to pay for. But, but if you, you know, if you said, hey, we want them for six months, and we want to keep this price for six months, yeah, I would do that. I don't, I don't have any problem doing that at all. But if you, if, for example, you just said, oh, we want to do it for three months, and then go month to month, probably at the beginning of the year, that would increase, and we typically do, you know, five or sooner or less than that.
Councilman, do you have anything to say?
No, Tim, this is Councilman Lou Barvanesian. Good to hear your voice again, and I'm glad that John was able to arrange this phone call. I think it cleared up a lot for everybody that's here, right? I think it's a great idea.
Thank you, I'm, I'm glad to, glad to be talking to you. I know that, that, you know, the, the city has thought about this for, you know, a long time, and, and I'm happy that you'll take action on it and, and move forward, because I, I just, I'm a believer that the city manager, former government, helps communities, and I've been one myself, and I, and that's kind of how I help communities, is providing this service.
Thank you. Yeah, anything else? That's it? That's it?
What's wrong with you, anyway?
Yes?
I don't know if you want to excuse Mr. Pippin?
Yes, yes, hey, well, Tim, thank you very much, and I'll have the deputy city manager reach out, okay?
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a rest, your evening.
All right, Tim.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Yes?
No, this is my opinion. I, my opinion is that I, I think that there are some things that he doesn't understand about, that you can clarify with him about our six months.
Yes.
And how, if we, if we want them longer than that, how can we get them beyond? So you'll have to talk. That's up to you to take care of, okay? I, I think that we should instruct the deputy city manager to go ahead and have...
Oh, Mr. Kissinger, where did Mr. Galindo fall in all of this? Was he a part of, he being notified?
No.
He was, was he a part of that level?
Oh, he was.
Okay.
So, I think we should instruct the deputy city manager to make contact with this company, and have this company get a hold of Mr. Lucero, and go after him of what he needs to do, okay? And we should engage the company. I'm tired of going back and forth with this deal. Okay, we've spent enough time. Now, let's put, let's, let's clear this up now, okay? We've, we've talked about a lot of things, especially in policy, that we need to address, so we need to have some kind of stability in our negotiation. We have to.
You have a good mayor.
Well, no, but I'm not talking about, I'm talking about it for business.
He's a, for a while.
We didn't tell IPA to fight as a mayor.
Yes.
So, as we move forward, in case you all make a motion, I think it might be prudent to make the motion to authorize the mayor to sign off an engagement letter with IPM, and to instruct me to forward that engagement letter to, to get the negotiation on, on this contract.
And, and also...
Right, and to provide him with, so far, one name, with Mr. Lucero, so Tim and this company can reach out to Mr. Lucero.
Yeah.
I, I...
Yes, go, go ahead, no.
Hold on, I, I, I agree with that, but I just want there to be clarity, that the document is not presented to the mayor until the city attorney has approved the contract. Okay? My question is, Mr. Kissinger, did, did you get any numbers from Mr. Pippin? Like, how much the, the whole deal's going to cost, or do we, do we know?
I think to start, it's a $1,500 to...
Yeah, but, but after that, how much would it be per month? No, it's based off of the salary. That, that's between them and the employee. And by, how much is this going to cost the city? No, he gets his money from the, what we pay the salary. Exactly, but how much are we going to be paying IPM for city manager services?
Well, yeah, we have a range, we have a range, and we're going to stay within that range.
It's a salary.
If he can, if he can, if he can get us a city manager within that range, that's where he gets his money from.
I know, so, so we have that range, and then we have the added cost of Mr. Pippin. No, no, no. It's in the salary. The guy who has the salary? Yep, it can pay for it.
Well, we, we, you can ask that before we even start sending letters.
But I'm almost sure. That's the way it worked in education. We hire the person, we pay the company, and the company gets, they get their commission from there, because they sign off. If your salary's $200,000, we get 10% of that. That's why you pay them. They take their deal, and then they pay the employee. That's why they say it's their employee, not ours.
Yes, go ahead.
But, but obviously, Mr. Mayor, they're going to be adding unemployment, they're going to be adding, you know...
French benefits.
All the French benefits that we would give them anyway.
Yeah, but that's...
Right.
But that's, that's, they, they will give us one lump sum, they're not going to tell us, we're charging so much, and whatever. But again, again, I think, I think we should just stick to one thing. We're, we're confusing, again, this is an interim city manager, and now we're trying to confuse the whole issue by adding two people that want to be permanent city managers.
Well, it's one person.
We're still with the same conversation, Mark. We asked...
It's two different deals.
No, we're not. We agreed on one person, and we said, he's going to take care of it.
Again, what we're looking for is an interim city manager. If, if two people, as far as I heard, I've heard two names.
What names did you hear?
Greg Lucero and Galindo.
But he answered it, he answered that Galindo wasn't a part of that tier.
Okay.
That's why. So we're one person.
Okay, so, so we're discussing one person, but again, that one person wants to be a permanent city manager.
How do you know?
How do you know he doesn't?
I don't know, that's why he let him go through the process.
But again, that's why I'm saying, I think we're confusing the deal. This gentleman here, his business is an interim city manager.
That's right.
And that's what the whole story was, let's find an interim city manager. So my opinion is, I would like to have a little...
Lou Bar, Lou Bar, he, he answered, when he talks to the person, because we're asking him, when he talks to that person, if Greg decides to be an interim, and he accepts, whatever, then he's going to be one of the persons going to be interviewed.
Yeah, yes, but I, I, I understand that, but then we're adding more time to it. Is he going to vet the guy, vet the guy now within, within three days, or how many days? If he's, if he's going to present three or four people to us in two weeks, right? How long is it going to take? How long is it going to take to go ahead and do the background check? If, and now we're stretching it out to a month, maybe we're going to stretch it out even a month? We're trying to get somebody in there now, right?
They do the background check, right? I think Mr. Kiss is a...
He's going to be doing the background check. That's what I heard, he was going to vet it, and he's going to do the background check, right? That's what I heard.
Well, I still say, we're confusing two different things, but, you know... Mr. Ray, I stand ready to give Mr. Pippin whatever direction you all want me to give, right? You want me to call Mr. Pippin and say, proceed, and send down three applications down here for you to consider for your interim city manager, engage him in a contract, and work out all the details, and make sure that Mike gets his eyes on it before the mayor signs it. I'm willing to do that. If you're also instructing me to provide him with a name of the potential associate of his, I'm willing to do that, too. However you all direct me to, to do it, that's how I'll do it.
It makes no difference at the end of the six months, at the end of the six months, you said, if, if acting city manager or interim city manager X, at the end of the six months, the mayor and council is happy with him, and says, we want to offer you a contract for two years, he says, that's fine, I let him go, that's what I'm here for, to provide him. That person might want to, everybody's happy with him, and you buy would say, we'll offer you a contract for two years. You just got to make sure that's on the contract.
Right, but he mentioned there's a penalty, there's a buyout penalty there that we would have to...
But there is the opportunity to...
And we don't have to go six months. He said three months, three months is the minimum.
But, right.
Yeah, but...
But our, the way that our charter is written on acting city manager or interim city manager, it says that the, the person is appointed month to month. What we've done is, we've appointed, obviously, the deputy city manager for six months until further notice, but every month, there's a possibility vested in the council to...
Appoint.
To, like, remove or appoint someone else. So we'd have to work that out with the...
That's up to you.
Right.
You take care of it.
To that the person, when they come on board, understands that every month, it's part of our charter that the council can...
But we still have to interview whoever he sends us. And it's not going to be two.
Send you, send you about three.
Three.
Three, for you to consider and engage.
Yeah. And we want him to consider, to look up, and you can give the other person's information.
If that's what the council wishes, then the whole time, off order.
Okay, Mayor, I, I, I'm ready. We, we've talked this, and now we're bringing up something that's delay and hamper.
Then, then let's vote on two, on two deals. If we're going to just go, go ahead and vote, for him to send us who he's got right now available, and we will, we will be doing interviews within two weeks, or are we willing to extend it and add someone else into the deal? That's, yeah, that's, that's the way I look at it, right? As far as I can see, it's two different, two different deals completely.
Mayor, okay, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with interim public management to provide us the services for interim city manager, and that Mr., our acting city manager, Mr. Kissinger, be authorized to provide the information to interim public management on Mr. Greg Lucero.
Mr. Ray, second. Second. Okay, any discussion?
Can I make a motion, too, or...
No, we have to, we're, we're on this. Okay, on this, on this one. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Aye.
Yeah, we talked about this one.
Okay? Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. So that's what it's going to be, okay? Okay? We're going to go with that.
Okay.
End of conversation. Mr. Kissinger, you got your, you know what to do. You know the intent of the timeframe. Okay, Mayor, I'm ready.
Okay. Did you vote, Mr. Verona?
Yes, I did.
You did? Okay, because I didn't hear you vote.
Yes, he did. Letty, you heard me, right, Letty? That's all that's important.
Letty's ears are the only ones that are important.
That's it, as long as she got me there, that's it.
Yo, did you hear what she said? You don't want to know. All right, number six, orders. Consideration Possible Action Order 2020-09-052. An order of the council of the city of Novellas, Arizona, adopting return-to-play guidelines established by National Little League Arizona Soccer Association and USTA regarding the opening of Fletcher Field Run Turley and Tennis Courts.
Second. Second. Discussion.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'm the one that put this order, and I've talked very thoroughly with Parks and Rec Marcel. I know his recommendation was not, not to approve, but I told him that it would help to, you know, there's two good points on, on both the Turley and Fletcher, that, you know, I, and as I said it before, I will not intervene with the Parks and Rec managing of the fields, and if they have to reseed, and dates for reseeding, everybody must abide by those rules or needs to the fields. But I think it'd be a good way to start doing, getting the kids out, and like I've told whoever, all the people that have pushed me or asked me to do this, if you guys don't follow it, the city won't close them.
Go ahead, Councilman Verona.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to read, two, two, two things I want to bring up on this subject, Mayor. I want to read an item that I get on the City Mail, Mail here, email, from Chamber Business News, their newsletter that they provide every other day, called Dry Heat. It says right here, Phoenix reopening reservable athletic fields at city parks. Spectators, official, and coaches will be required to wear face masks. Spectators must stay at least six feet away from the field, and no more than 48 youths or 24 adults can participate on a field at one time. My second point, Mayor, is that on Monday, this coming Monday, September the 14th, the Novellas Unified School District Governing Board will be considering a recommendation from Superintendent Fara, that the golf, volleyball, and cross-country teams will begin on September the 21st, and the football team will begin on September the 28th. All of our student athletics will be... All of our student athletics will be required to take, uh, coronavirus tests on a weekly basis. Student athletes and the coaching staff. But it, it is up for consideration. I don't know if it's gonna pass, but that is up for consideration.
My, my concern on this, excuse me, my concern on this is, who's gonna regulate it? And I know our recreation department is not gonna regulate it. And you say the parents are gonna regulate it, and that they, uh, uh, they know that if they don't comply, it's gonna close. That's not sufficient for me. Uh, I think we've been in three days in a row with no cases, John, is it? Three days? Or two days?
I believe it's been two and one. I don't think I've gotten two days.
It's been two days. And, and, uh, and I agree it, I don't know. You know, we still have our city hall closed too. And we have our buildings closed. The county hasn't closed too. The school is closed too. Uh, till when? You gonna open the school? October what?
Mr. Mayor?
I don't know.
You don't know? Yeah?
No, I can't tell you because it's, it's up to the entire board to comment.
So, so, one case today?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And, and, you know, I, I'm a little concerned. I, I don't know, you know. Today in the news, uh, came out that about 5,000 children were positive, came out positive, you know, in certain cases in, in about a month's time or two months. Uh, children are supposedly not catching it like adults were. Uh, they're very strong. They can handle it, but they are still catching it, and, and I'm, I'm a little concerned with that. And, and, uh, you said it was gonna be used for one month because they're gonna reseed. Why can't we just wait until after that and get everything cleared up? Why, why one month? And then, you know, when we've been very good about it for four months or three months, you know, um, I, 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 I'm a little concerned about this. And I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna be responsible for anything, yeah, actually, you know, in that, in that area. And I understand, you're the Little League guy, you know, and I know you, you wanna get it going, but, you know, it's, and I've been supportive of it. I'm supportive about soccer, but also I'm not gonna be supportive of, of nobody from our team, which is city, is gonna be regulating that and see, make sure, making sure that everything is done. Cause I don't think recreation is gonna be up to doing that. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm, I'm glad that we're, uh, working on policies and guidelines to reopen. But like you said, you know, uh, we're looking at maybe 20 to 25 days just to, 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 uh, before they start the reseeding. And I, I don't think, you know, I think we're taking a risk just for 25 more days. Uh, I do see that maybe the tennis courts could be opened, but the, the other fields, if they're gonna be reseeding in, in three weeks, you know, I, I don't, I don't think, you know, it's too much of a risk for that. Uh, and on, on this order, there's no date on reopening, so I, I, I don't know what, uh, what the date would be to reopen. But, uh, it's, it's good that we're setting policies and guidelines for the future use of this parks.
Go ahead, Councilor, will you gonna say something? Mubar, will you gonna say something?
Well, the only thing I, the only thing I can add is that they, they came up with a, that, I think it was 10 different universities, all known universities, that there was 26,000 people had tested positive, uh, the students had tested positive, and, uh, and not one of them went to the hospital. They all basically got well from the deal. Nobody was in real danger. Again, I, I can't, I can't judge. I mean, if it was my children, you know, I don't know what I would do, right? Uh, but, uh, you know, I don't know, if the kids are out there throwing the ball to the two kids and three kids or whatever, I, I don't know. Actually having an actual game or whatever, I, I, again, it's up to Mr. Michael now as to what, what regulations they would have and what, uh, what deals they would exactly have, right?
Yeah, but they're gonna be regulated by the parents, he said. And by whoever's gonna be there, I don't know.
All, Mayor, uh, you know, Little League is not functioning. All the, all the people that are gonna be using the, the, both the soccer and, and the Turley and the pleasure fields are club teams. Club teams are playing in Phoenix, in Tucson, and participating, uh, in tournaments. Uh, they've been playing since, um, May. And they're all aware and are using the guidelines that are being, uh, initiated by all the tournaments. They get tested, uh, for the temperature before going, walking into any sports complex. They get, have to have all their bags separately. Every kid has to have their own equipment. There's, uh, you know, they've been doing it. And, and basically, our kids, you could say, are right now in, in the, in the negative or, or in, in the midst. They can't practice. They ha, that's, they haven't been able to practice. They're not talking about having games here, like I've said, you know, keeping it to one team. Uh, they haven't been able to practice. So that's what they want. That's all they want. They wanna practice. They don't wanna have games, have tournaments. They just wanna be able to practice. Cause they're playing in, in, uh, in other tournaments in Tucson, in Prescott, in, uh, Payson, in Phoenix. And, uh, and they're, but they feel that they need to practice at home, or home fields, to be able to be more competitive. They're doing it already. I know they're gonna continue, but they're, all they're asking is to be able to practice.
Go ahead.
I just have a question. You're gonna be responsible?
They're not doing it at their own risk. It says it on the ordinance.
Just go ahead. That, that, that's a point there. Mr. Messi, we at the schools have to have the students sign. We put up a sign, "At Your Own Risk," does that meet the legal requirement?
No, my recommendation would be that everyone who participates would sign a waiver. And we could have waivers available.
Right, no, no, but I, that's what I'm wanting, Mr. Mubar.
If that's needed.
Uh, that the parents would have to sign a waiver.
Protect ourselves too. That's the same thing at the schools. Everybody's gotta sign.
And according to what the guidelines say, it's, um, they have to schedule the practice, so we should know who it is. Uh, and then we can make sure that those people sign waivers.
So we will change that then. It's not at their own risk, they must sign a waiver.
Well, that's what own risk means, is that they're waiving any claim against the city, and they assume all the risk associated with this activity. It's, it's a release. We call it a release, but it's an assumption of the risk. I've documented.
Councilor Diaz, you gonna say something?
Uh, yeah, I've, uh, you know, I think it is needed that, that kids have to be out there practicing and, and doing what they have to do. But we have to do it in a safe and orderly fashion. You know, little kids, uh, young kids, uh, teenagers and all that, they, they all have their mind of their own. So they have to be strictly supervised.
Yeah.
And, and that's gonna be one of the, the issues of who is gonna supervise? The parents? Uh, who is gonna be out there with the waivers, getting all, all these people to sign waivers? Who's gonna be responsible for, for getting the waiver signed and turning them, turning them into Parks and Rec? Uh, uh, and then it says here, uh, like, on Fletcher Field, coach responsible to sanitize dugouts after each practice. Uh, who's gonna be, uh, supervising that? You know, it's, it's, uh,
It's too much.
You know, it's needed. We, we gotta, you know, I, you know, I, I wish this pandemic never would have occurred.
But like, like the Vice Mayor said, it's for 27 days. Then after that, they can't play because it's, they're gonna be receiving.
Right, right. So to give Mr. Michael now the benefit of the doubt, uh, those were, those were my questions. Is who will be out there, uh, giving the, the people the signing waivers? Who will turn in the, the waivers, like, leave to Parks and Rec? And, uh, to keep the liability, uh, away from the city? That's one thing we have. We all have.
Councilor Diaz, uh, normally, the, the regular function of Parks and Rec and, and crew, even Little League and all that, you know, when Little League, uh, is functioning, Little League takes the baseball fields, and we do the scheduling and all that. Uh, right now, it's basically gonna be club ball and all that. We, Little League does not have the fields. Parks and Rec has, uh, the fields. They do all the scheduling. They do all the, all the times when, who, and who, and when they could practice, both on Turley and for the soccer and the baseball. So, you know, they, they, they do the, you know, contracting, uh, when it's a club team and all that. Club teams have to have insurance and all that, and they present, uh, Parks and Rec all, all their insurance. So Parks and Rec would be doing, getting their, their signature by, by team that will be participating.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
What, what would be the next availability of reopening the fields, like, in two months or three months?
I think it goes down, all the way down to mid, mid to late, uh, uh, December or something like that. Cause of reseeding. I don't know, Marcel could answer that.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to ask Marcel that question, when the fields will be available?
Would you please, would you please last for a second?
Marcel, if you can hear us, uh, could you tell us when the reseeding is done and the field being available again for play?
If, if we get, if we get in, uh, Mayor, members of the council, if we get in there first of October and the weather is favorable, um, probably in the December, first part of January, uh, if temperatures are colder than normal, and obviously that pushes that starting back a little bit more, uh, but end of the year, earliest, uh, first part of the year, um, the latest.
Can I ask Marcel a question?
Yes.
Marcel, do you know how many teams would be trying to use our fields, just these two fields to practice on a daily basis? And do we have enough time? Because I know we're not gonna do it at, at night, right? Are, are we gonna have teams upset that they don't have, uh, practice space?
That I don't know, uh, John. I, nobody has really been knocking on our door to say, hey, let's open up right away. Um, yes, they are travel ball clubs, and yes, we are only allowing practices and no games, no scrimmages. But, uh, concern should be that these teams are traveling to other communities, and they're coming back. Uh, yeah, we're not allowing any, uh, competition here. Uh, we're barely opening at this stage in the game. I would call this an early phase, uh, into, uh, participation, and that's something that I think needs to be considered, uh, and we weigh in on this decision.
But Marcel.
I don't have an idea how many teams are, uh, interested in potentially using the facilities at this time.
Sure. Marcel, in the past, did we have conflict with ball clubs that wanted to use our fields and not have enough lit ball fields or ball field space or time for them to do their practice? Outside of COVID?
No, no, we, we have. Uh, that's why our facilities are usually sought out because we're the only ones that have lighted facilities.
Correct.
And, so.
So I just wanna bring it to the council's attention that if, if we do open up our ball fields, and we're only opening it up during the lighting hours, it's gonna be crowded.
Once they see it's open, everybody's gonna jump out.
And it's not limited to ball clubs, it's like any, I guess, any type of scheduled, uh, practice.
Councilor, you gonna say something?
Yeah, Marcel, just a question. Of course, the fields haven't been used now for three months at least. Do they have to be reseated? Usually reseating is because either the grass is worn out. I, I look at the fields now, and they look gorgeous, right? So do they have to be reseated?
Uh, yes, Councilor Manizian, uh, right now, our, the grass that you see right now is verbuda, and verbuda's gonna go dormant here, uh, once the temperatures start to get a little cooler. Uh, so we have to overseed with, uh, winter rye, uh, and that's what keeps it green early into the, the winter, into spring and fall. Uh, so yes, we have to, have to overseed, uh, at this time. We can't just let it go.
All right, thank you, Marcel.
Mar, Marcel, uh, could you, uh, do you recommend this, Marcel?
My recommendation, Mayor, was not to open the facilities at this time, um, for all the many reasons you guys have talked about. I did talk to the county health department, um, Tuesday. Uh, they have no opposition, uh, to us opening the fields. However, they were very quick to remind me that, um, the COVID transmission potential here in our, in our county is considered to be at moderate level. So yes, the virus is still very active. We have, I believe, close 810 active cases still in the county. Uh, they had some concerns, what's gonna happen in two weeks, because they did have, uh, fair, some activity going on at the fair, the press meetings, and stuff like that. Thousands of people, at least over 1,000, and many came from the outside. So they're, they're kind of sitting back a little bit themselves and wondering what the impact of that's gonna have. So I think the prudent thing to do, in, in my opinion, is, why are we in a hurry? We've got three, it's actually gonna be three weeks, I don't know, before we set down the facilities.
Just one question to Marcel. Marcel, uh, you got, you know, the way we've always, we've worked, uh, Little League, and when Little League doesn't have the fields, you guys have always, uh, done the scheduling for club teams and all that, and, and timings of, of, uh, use of the fields with no issues, correct?
That's correct. And we don't have any concerns with, uh, being able to schedule the use of the facilities or, uh, having individuals comply and, uh, complete a participation waiver. Uh, that's, we have no concerns with that at all. We can take care of that on our end.
Is there any more questions? Marcel, thank you very much.
Thank you, Marcel.
There any more questions? We have motion.
We have motion, the second, Mayor.
We're on roll call on this. We'll start with the Vice Mayor.
Nay.
Aye.
Nay. Go ahead.
No.
Councilor?
Aye.
Go ahead. No running. It was 43.
43, we can be very close, right?
Very close. Thank you.
Uh, Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I, 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 I don't mean that. I've talked a lot about the ball field, you know, and we'll talk about the tennis court. Is that both, both tennis court?
It'll be completely the whole thing. It was on the, the same agenda.
Okay.
So it's the same. Number seven, consideration or resolution. Consideration and possible, let me see. Yes. Consideration, possible action of resolution R. 2020-09-010. Resolution by the city of Nogales, Santa Cruz County in opposition to the announcement by the US Trade Representative of the plans to support American producers of seasonal and perishable fruits and vegetables at the expense of importers of Mexico fresh produce. Mexican fresh produce.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, have it.